Cypsie Planning Department meeting for July 21st, 2022. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up, we have Hudson Heritage amended Phase One site plan and subdivision.
Hi, it's Martin Berger and Susan Burke and Kyle Aherne from the call.
Hello.
Good evening, everyone. Marty, do you want to give me, give them the summary of where we're at?
Okay, well, I believe we're making progress. I think that we, as Kyle will mention and show you, we walk you through, I should say. We made a lot of progress on Building I. Made, eliminated a lot of the comments, resolved a lot of comments, addressed the county's comment. We are making some progress on the county trails. Specifically, we need to have, Saber EFG needs to have a call with the county and Dr. Allen Cross the T on the, on the walkways. We would like to talk to you about the walkway between lots one and six. And I believe the water easement request for lot 16 has been resolved and a few other things. So it probably would be best for Kyle to go through the specifics and we can knock them off one at a time.
Okay, great. Kyle?
Oh, and, and just last, just lastly, the, in regard to the lot, the landfill lot, you know, we, we acknowledged that there has to be a quote of warm body behind that. And we have modified the property owner association so that it will have ongoing and perpetual obligation for maintenance of the lot and the declaration amendment showing that has been sent to Eric and to David this past week.
Okay, great.
All right, so, so yes, I'll touch on some of the, kind of the main items that have been kind of the focus. There's some other technical comments like Marty mentioned that are, that are being coordinated and responded to. But, you know, the landfill Marty brought up, so that, that's been, you know, as lot 17, the subdivision of lot four into lot four and 17 has been, you know, something the board's been looking for some additional information. So like Marty said, that's been submitted this past week. So, you know, that will get reviewed and, you know, we'll be able to close that up hopefully with this next, you know, the next meeting if, you know, unless it can be a condition of approval. But the building I that Marty also mentioned, so, you know, you guys know the history there. That was the previous, it was previously office space, changed into a drive-through restaurant. The drive-through on Building L was removed. So that went through a couple of iterations that you guys have seen, starting back in January. And then last meeting, we went over the layout. That was kind of that, that last iteration, that was between the town, the county, and the applicant coming up was that solution there. So we, and we had a couple other coordination issues, just, you know, identifying the, there's an island within the drive-through area, just identifying that's multiple curbing, just kind of detailing out that space a little better. Adding up where we had proposed a right turn only for the drive-through, which is one way. Just adding a striped median to further delineate that and guide people in the correct direction of traffic. So we think we're there on Building I. You know, ADRF also asked for some additional information about the number of queuing spaces. So the tenant for Building I provided a letter that explains a little more, provided a little more detail in, you know, their operations, how, how many spaces they need from the order window to the pickup window and, you know, how, you know, how many spaces they actually need for this location, which they're expecting it to be a high-volume location. So, you know, it, it can handle a high-volume, you know, drive-through. So it's, we actually exceeded by one queuing space. The next item, yes, we're still going to have the, a follow-up meeting with the county that will further delineate some of the rail trail work. But you see in their comments that they're happy with what we're showing. It's more, more meeting to just finalize construction and, you know, future maintenance and that kind of stuff. But, you know, while we're talking about the rail trail, we also wanted to talk to you guys about, so we'll start with the rail trail between lots one and six. And, Susan, are you able to?
Yeah.
Susan, actually, Susan Burke is, her account sharing is Chrissy. So are you able to, is the host able to give her sharing capabilities?
She has sharing capabilities right now.
Okay.
Well, I'll, I'll start describing the issue. This is a very, very steep staircase rail, a set of staircases and a set of railings that was proposed between Building One and Six to connect to the, connect to the rail trail. We, we, bottom line is, we don't think it's viable or prudent to put there. We have a, we have two connections. We have one point south of here and we have a connection north of here. The connection south and north are 12 feet wide, they're bike, walking trails, et cetera. They're easy to navigate and they're safe. This is a switchback set of vertical stairs with railing that is going to be extremely difficult for anyone to walk on. Pikes can't bike there and we're going to wind up with kids using it as a skateboard park. It's the same reason why we, we and then the board agreed to not have it down along the north entrance, you know, coming up to lot two. So, you know, we don't think it's necessary because we have a better, safer, wider trail for bikers, walkers to the south and the north. And we think it's going to be a problematic situation if it was built, notwithstanding the impracticality, impractical nature of constructing it. I don't know if Susan has it on the screen.
Yes, she does. Right, so the last, I don't think we spoke on this particular item at the last meeting, but I believe it was two meetings ago, the board had directed us to essentially, you know, continue discussions with the planning department on, on that trail. You know, and it's, it's, it's something we've, we've continued to consider, but we just don't think it's, you know, it's this safety issue Marty talked about and, you know, the fact that we have the other two connections and, you know, the fact that we are, we're putting a lot of effort and, you know, cost into the Windsor Gate Road streetscapes there, making that, you know, town center area. So even if you don't use the north or the south connection, you, you know, you could also, well, you would use it with the south connection, but you can walk through Windsor Gate Road to that south connection or you can walk up, you know, the north, to the north connection. So there is, you know, we're not removing a connection to the rail trail. As far as not being able to get to the rail trail, we're just going from, you know, not providing a third connection.
But you can also walk across the Shoprite sidewalk.
Right, so Windsor Gate Road and then up to, and actually, yeah, and we also showed an additional through lot six. There's that, that connection down to, to Shoprite. So there's.
So bottom line, you know, we, we have discussed, we have discussed with the planning board. We, we've discussed it quite a few times. It's come, come back to the same point, though. There's, there's multitude connection points to the rail trail that are wider, safer, bigger, and better. So to force one in here that is going to necessitate somebody to find 50, 60 steps on a significant pitch or not be available for bike riders, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense.
Okay, thanks, Marty. Eric?
Sure. The staff recommendation for this evening is, it's a recommendation for deferral. The, we did receive a concept earlier this week for the landfill management. And then just, I think, two days ago, David and I did receive a copy of a draft agreement to the, for the management association to assume responsibility for the landfill. And I'll, I'll let David talk about that when we get there. There's also, with regard to the development management plan consistency, there's a minor discrepancy at 5,000 square feet. Again, David is taking a look at that. If the board, the board might see fit, their, their calculations show that the total building square footage is 5,000 square feet more. And there's a question as to whether the director's residence, which is in this phase, is included.
Did we lose you?
Yeah, the, the boardroom mic has cut out on the Zoom.
Okay.
Well, you and I have each other, at least, David.
But I think they can all hear us, so.
Yes. I've been working with IT to try to get them to fix this. I apologize, but hopefully it won't happen again.
Recording in progress.
Okay, we should be back. Do you hear us now?
Yes, much better.
I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, we did.
All right, apologize. Okay, shall I continue?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
So there, there is a minor discrepancy in the tabulation of square footage in Phase One, which comes out 5,000 square feet greater than the development, modified development management plan. It's attributable to the director's residence and council is looking at whether that's a technical error or, or how that should be counted. Depending on the result, the board could either find that it's insignificant and still consistent with the master plan, the modified development master plan, or it could request that the Phase Two allocation be reduced accordingly. The, with regard to the lot one and six pathway, the board previously expressed interest in retaining that. Clearly, the applicant has some reasons not to do it. I did check back, the modified development plan did call for 8.64 miles of pedestrian connectivity. And this plan now calls for 8.35 miles of pedestrian connectivity, which is just a reduction of just under three tenths of a mile. So the board can go either way with, with its preference on that.
And if I can add to the, you know, the other thing to consider with that now, you know, if the board wants me to look into exact widths, I certainly could. But the, you know, in, basically, the length is one thing, but the other change since that 8.6 mile number is that, you know, you'll recall, the county had requested wider trails. So there's less length, but they're also wider. So, you know, it's essentially.
Let me just finish, because I think you can, you can come back to it, because I was going to say, the other things that are called out and the changes in the Phase One amended plan are, as you said, the wider rail trail path. But there's also the reduction of the pedestrian-only concrete portion. There's a reduction in width and the elimination of the gazebo and the associated sidewalk staircase. So there's, there's, you know, there's a bit going both ways with regard to that. So that's, the, the board can discuss that further with the applicant if you'd like. There was, the other thing I thought, Building I architecture is, is deferred. Like most buildings, it can come at a later date. Lighting for the Building I changes and also for the various field changes included in this amendment. We don't yet have a lighting plan for it, so the board, they could proceed without it or they, or you could, or you could seek to get it for next time. I think that's, covers most of the issue. Oh, the one item, there was some other modifications on the plan, including to Building N. The traffic consultant called out a change there having to do with the circulation, which I thought would be wise to accept. It seemed to make sense, but again, you may want to discuss that with the traffic consultant. So I'll let David and Andy and the traffic consultant weigh in.
Andy?
So most of my comments on the site plan have been addressed with respect to Building I. I also had questions about the subdivision and the landfill, future maintenance, which I'm sure David will address when it's his turn. The main comment that I have remaining has to do with the rail trail maintenance along Hudson Heritage Drive up to the roundabout. I just want to make sure that either the master association declaration is modified to make sure that that's taken care of by the, the tenants of the site or the county is maintaining it. That's, that's it.
Okay. David?
So at the last meeting, the board, we did discuss lot 17, ownership and maintenance. Just by, by way of summary quickly, that, that area, that landfill is regulated by the DEC. It's subject to a consent order. There's a declaration already recorded against it, which prohibits certain development, commercial uses, industrial uses, et cetera, in perpetuity. The question that the board had was if we're subdividing this lot off and it, and it becomes its own lot, who is going to be responsible ultimately for maintaining what are called the engineering controls that are on the site right now, which are, which are, you know, which are containing the landfill and the materials that are in the landfill. The, the owner currently, EFG Saber, pursuant to its consent order with the DEC, monitors and maintains the environmental controls and has to provide periodic reports to the DEC demonstrating, taking air samples, water samples, soil samples, demonstrating that there have been no leaks or any, any contamination in the area. The latest report was submitted in April of 2022. It's every, I think it's every two years the reports have to go in. We were provided with a copy of that earlier this week. Eric and I went, went, went through it and I think there, I mean, it's an 800-page document, but there's a summary that's about 10 pages that we could distribute to the board, but, but showing that the engineering controls aren't working and, and the maintenance is, is moving forward. So what, the issue that's outstanding is what entity will, in perpetuity, be responsible for, for that maintenance and whatever else is required by the DEC? Right now, it's the owner. Initially, the applicant had proposed to create a, a different entity to own the, this, this property. And some members of the, of the planning board questioned whether that entity would be sufficient to, to maintain, because what happens in 10 years if the entity decides to walk away or, or something? So what the applicant has now proposed, which, which I'm comfortable with in a legal perspective, is shifting the maintenance responsibility and the, and the reporting responsibilities to the master association that is created for this entire property that has various obligations. Andy was referring to some just a minute ago and, and, you know, that maintain the open space and other common areas of the property. So we're comfortable with that approach. The outstanding item is, is just the declaration that's currently recorded that governs the master association and what they, what they can do in their obligations doesn't cover lot 17 or, or what will become lot 17. So we were provided with a draft modified resolution that they've asked at the time not to, to distribute. Or we assume that once it's finalized, they'll give us a, a final draft to review. And once, once we're comfortable with it, I, I think that's all the board would need. The board could be in a position, hopefully, the next meeting, to approve the subdivision and just the, the condition would be that the declaration, the revised declaration is recorded before the chair signs the, the subdivision plan. So I think, I think we're, we're on, on track for, for that in August. With respect to the, the other items, comparing the development master plan as approved to what's, what's proposed, a couple of just sort of housekeeping items to make sure that, that the, the square footage is, is correct. Or at least if it's not correct, then we'll need to just make a clearly record moving forward, which will be in, hopefully, in a resolution next month, how we're going to deal with those discrepancies. I think overall, just backing up so that the board can, can remember, kind of the overarching question is, the discrepancy itself, the question is, is it, is it a substantive deviation from the intent of, of the approved development master plan? You know, always recognize that the development master plan is somewhat flexible, because, you know, as you go through the process, some things may need to, to be tweaked, changed. The board just has to be comfortable that whatever deviation is, is being identified is, is still consistent with the intent of, of that development master plan.
Okay, thank you, David. Alex, are you on? Alex from?
Yes, yes, I'm, yes, I'm on. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah, and Susan, would you mind stopping the share of your screen for, for just a little bit? Thank you. All right, go ahead, Alex.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. I just wanted to follow up with our response to comments memo, which we submitted July 11th for the Hudson Heritage project. Item number one was with regard to the drive-through. And as Kyle mentioned earlier, we've requested additional backup information regarding the queue, the development, development of the queue lengths. We found those materials satisfactory, which provided adequate backup, which explains how the drive-through length was determined. So we found that, that those materials acceptable and that addressed our comment. There was also the request for the additional striped island or striped pavement just to further delineate the right turn only, again, which Kyle addressed, and we found that satisfactory as well. We had one additional comment about potential contingency measures in, just in, in the event that the queues did exceed the length of the drive-through lane. But based on the backup materials that we did receive from the proposed tenant regarding the operations of the drive-through as well as the determination of the queue space length, we felt that was acceptable and the need, and combined with the fact that the, the actual drive-through lane does not exit onto a public street, but rather just into the parking aisle, it was our determination that the contingency plan, including possibly a gate, would not necess, would not be necessary at this time.
Okay, thank you, Alex.
Sure, no problem. And then we also had an additional comment on, regarding Building N, against another drive-through. One, one item that we did have, one comment that we did have was regarding the truck turning template drawings for the, for the sanitation vehicles. In the most recent site plan, there, the actual movements of the, the sanitation vehicles in that area appear to be blurry. But it was made known to us that this was actually just a glitch in the program, but they can access, but the trucks actually can maneuver, maneuver that area well without any difficulties. The other comment that we did have was we, we recommended an extension. And I'll try and share my screen here. It may be easier for me to just explain this with the visuals.
Yep, go ahead, Alex.
Okay, sure.
Not seeing it.
Okay, I was still trying to pull it up.
Oh, okay. This is related to Building N still, right?
Correct.
I think there's a copy of what you're trying to pull up in your, that was in set in your letter, right? Which the board has.
That's correct.
So if they, if they want to pull out their letter, I think they might see the image you're trying to project. There we go.
Okay, everyone can see the, the image?
Yep, if you could zoom in, if you could just zoom in a little bit on the pictures.
Sure.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
A little bit easier for people to see. People like me especially. Yeah, thank you.
We actually recommended possibly extending the curb at this location here just to further channelize the one-way traffic that was exiting the drive-through at this point and to further reinforce the fact that movements at this entrance here would be right turn only and that movements here exiting would be left turn only. And that to discourage drivers from accidentally turning right or proceeding through. Looking at this a bit further, yes? I apologize. Go ahead, Alex. Oh, sure, no problem. One other alternative, which is not mentioned in the memo, is reverting this back to two-way traffic flow, not recommending the, the curb extension here and permitting two-way traffic flow in the area, in this parking area here. However, our one concern with that was you have the exiting drive-through traffic coming through here and you have the exiting drive-through bypass lane also exiting, forming almost a two, two-lane one-way exit. One option would be to further channelize, once, once vehicles exit the pickup window, channelize this into a single lane and extend the curb further in this direction. That way, there would only be one lane of traffic exiting the drive-through and the bypass lane simultaneously. And then that would allow for two-way traffic flow to occur here in this parking area. So that would, that would actually be our follow-up comment. It's not listed here in the memorandum, but that's a potential idea. One would, that would allow two-way traffic flow in this parking area here, but still maintaining safety by only reducing this to a one-way, one lane of exiting traffic from the drive-through and bypass lane. And those were all the comments from our memo. All of our previous comments, we feel, have been addressed adequately, that were, that were included in prime memorandums.
Thank you, Alex. Marty, did you have a comment?
As this is appropriate time, I do. My, my, what I'd like to say is first, in regard to Alex's suggestion, I'd like to suggest that we postpone that to see if there's even an issue or a problem. If there's issue or problem, we could look at exploring some of these, one or more of these options. But so far, there hasn't been any issue, no concern, there's no accidents, no police comes, coming to the site. So rather than change this to the third time, I would respectfully request that we hold that, those ideas and see if there's an issue. In regard to the other options, I know that the motion or the resolution is to carry this over. I would respectfully request that we think about, you know, approving it tonight or at least approving it in August, subject to a couple of conditions that we might need to follow up on. I know we'll need to follow up on the follow metrics for Building I, because I don't think the consultant will have it because of her, their internal issues. And we might not have the construction-related, you know, maintenance agreements done with the county. But I think everything else ought to be in a position where to be reviewed by the planning board and the consultants and approved by the company.
Okay, thanks, Marty. Let's go around the room. Peter, do you have any comments?
I'm okay with Building N as it stands. I'm okay with the rail trail. I think the modifications that you've made are sensible. With regard to the 5,000 square foot adjustment, that represents just over a 1% delta in the, in the square footage, which I agree that I don't think is significant. in the square footage, which I agree that I don't think is significant. My only question is, how do we do it? Do we, do we need to amend the, the plan, or just put a, a note on the plan? How, how exactly do we?
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll, by, by next, the next meeting, we should be able to come up with David with a...
Okay.
A nice, clean way to do that.
Yeah, and as far as the declaration amendment with the HHMA, you know, we'd like to see it, and that's pretty much it, before, before the next meeting. But I, I think other than that, we're pretty much ready to go.
Okay. Ben?
I agree with Peter, I think the rail trail improvements, changes are good. As far as the declaration goes, if Eric and David are comfortable with it, since we haven't seen it, you know, I don't have a problem, but like Peter said, we should see it also, as long as you guys are comfortable with it. That's it.
Okay, Steve?
No additional comments.
Okay, and I don't really have anything further either, as long as we get a couple of these tied up, I see no reason why this couldn't be approved next month, so, so yeah, go ahead, in motion.
Well, we, we, this is on for public hearing, so...
Oh, I'm sorry, public hearing.
Yep.
I move that we open public hearing.
Okay, so is that now?
Well, hold on one second, we haven't, we haven't yet opened the public hearing, so hold on for a moment, please.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I move that we open the public hearing. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded, called the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
So we have one person who's expressed interest in speaking, if you want to go ahead and state your name.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because there has been in the recent past, you know, intense garbling when it comes to this particular subject and, and Zoom calling. So, you know, specific mics have been, you know, very garbled when it rails against, you know, the, the antenna that is going to be constructed on 10-15 Winslow Gate Road in that area, and I'm calling about that. First of all, I'm going to maintain that the application is incomplete. There was no justifiable public necessity, there's no, there's no public necessity that was proven, okay? There's no probate of evidence. So last thing, got a stamp of approval from the zoning board of appeals, and I think we should kind of circle back to that. That's number one. Number two, having to do with further aspects of the incomplete application, it just seems like the whole thing, that whole antenna, that, that, that meeting, that zoning board meeting, it was kind of backwards. At the very end of all these other agendas, it, you know, we, we circled back and then said that, you know, meatball seeker wasn't necessary, and that the, the ZVA was the lead agency, and it was type two, actually, whatever it was, you know, it was all a circling back kind of thing, and it just seemed like a point of water, that's one.
Michelle, can I just, Michelle, can I just interrupt for one moment? I just want to make you aware that this is not a public hearing about that cell tower application, that is not before the planning board yet. This is about Hudson Heritage, the site plan amendment, and subdivision. I just want you to be clear about that.
Right, but now you're talking about a master association, you know, kind of assuming control over the proper environmental and, and monitoring of air, et cetera, that was just mentioned, okay? That does affect the fact that the tower is sitting right there, okay? And then you have the rail discussions about the rail trail and people occupying that space, and it, it, it really crashes into the OET bulletin 65 that talks about the particular antenna, and that, you know, you really shouldn't be there for more than 30 minutes. So maybe we should increase the speed limit on any bicyclists or pedestrians that are in the area, and the, the mapping that was done on this antenna does not have any legend to it. So you don't know if it's in the area of where, you know, 146 feet to 1,000 feet of that antenna, because that's where most of the radiation's going to fall, and again, the OET bulletin 65 does not talk about more than 30, a 30-minute loitering period. So, you know, it does impact everything. It, it impacts everything that you, you will be so wonderfully placing in, in this, in this area. So that's why I'm speaking about it, and you have an antenna affidavit, the, the owner of the, of the antenna is, is mentioned, but there's no address of this gentleman, and that, that's really, that's curious, and you don't have proper insurance. So if you don't have proper insurance, that master association that is forming, whether it's full of shell companies or what, they're going to be responsible for...
Wrap up, Michelle, because your three minutes is, is up, and, and we, we'd like you to wrap it up, please.
Okay, well, there, you know, that's, that's most of what I wanted to talk about. Fire and electrical has better be done, because it'll affect everything on that property. If you don't do proper fire and electrical on that antenna, you're asking for problems.
All right, thank you.
So I'm going to be writing, and I noticed that public comments were not included on the application at the town hall, where it says, yes, there was, you know, public commentary that put this, you know, it's very controversial in terms of the public's view of this antenna and this whole property, that they're going to be avoiding. So, and you, you can't, you can't take away public comments. If you're checking the box, yes, there are public comments as attached, and there's nothing there, that's, that's upsetting.
Thank you very much, Michelle, for your comments.
Thank you for allowing me to comment on this.
Anyone else? Is there anyone else on the Zoom that wishes to comment on the Hudson Heritage Site Plan subdivision application? Anyone in the room?
Okay, I move that we adjourn the public hearing to August 18th, 2022.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
So four?
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
And defer further action with comments as follows. I move that the planning board defer further action on this application, subject to the following items 1 through 12. Responses in writing to comments of the planning board, and all comments received from town departments and agencies. Said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness, including but not limited to the following, 1 through 12.
Okay, it's been moved to defer.
Second.
Okay, and it's been seconded, called the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four to defer. Thank you, Marty, thank you, everyone.
Excellent.
All right, next up, we have mobile station 3480 North Road, Mid Hudson Center, for amended site plan and special use permit hearing and architectural review. Who's here for mobile station?
Hi, I'm Eric Rogie with Hudson Land Design.
I'm Rich D'Andrea with Colliers Engineering Design.
And Tom Kibbit with CPD Group.
I'm going to share my screen with the plans right now. Okay, so I want to run through the, the major changes since we were here last. There, there was a few comments about conflicts of traffic coming from the drive-through and traffic around the drive, around the, the fuel pumps. So we extended the drive-through lane, forcing them to go all the way around the pumps where it's two-way traffic, so it directs them all the way around the pumps. The other change we, we did is we added a raised crosswalk to try to protect traffic coming up from Route 9 on the sidewalk and the delivery exit. And we also added quite a few landscaping trees around Route 9, mainly to the north side of the sidewalk that goes down to the road. There's a few other minor changes, but those, those are the big ones. You can see there's a lot of trees there. So we, we were not able to get the lighting plan in, in time, we have it ready now, so we want to submit that. We'll be doing that next. We also, I'd like to run through a couple of the comments, I don't know if we can do that now, or if you want to run through all of them, or a certain number, I don't know how you like to do that.
You can, why don't you pick out the, the baby, the, the highlights of things that you want the board, that you want the board to know, or provide feedback, get feedback from them on tonight.
Okay, so the first one is that raised crosswalk where the deliveries will exit and the sidewalk is, there, there was a comment about adding a gate. We're thinking eliminating the raised sidewalk and just putting the gate in, that, I think that'll accomplish the same thing without having to add in extra drainage and getting all that to work properly. The other comment was about the crosswalk down by the sidewalk here. There was a comment about pulling the sidewalk away from the drive-through lane, so there's, you know, moving it south, so there's more visibility for people crossing that. We're kind of limited to what we can do there with the existing sidewalk and where the stairs are, so we're thinking about just narrowing this crosswalk, so people cross it further from the building, and maybe putting a planter right at the corner of the building, just so people can't jump off the sidewalk right into traffic. I'm hoping that, that, that would answer that comment. AKRF had a comment about adding bollards to this drive-through lane extension right here. Initially, we have it just striped, so there's really no way to prevent people from cutting across it. Instead of doing the bollards, which, which probably get bumped into by cars all the time, we'd just like to extend this curved island all the way to the end. That way, it forces people, it can look a little better, and we can, we can put some plants in there that, so it's visible from a car, so you can see it below your hood line. And I also want the, the signage. We're still working on the signage plan, on revising the signage plan, it looks like we're going to need some variances for that. Can that be done concurrently with what we're doing here? Can we kind of submit that separately? Because there's another consultant working on that, and I don't know if that can be kind of, you know, run at the same time, through zoning board, through zoning?
You can submit, but it wouldn't make sense to go on their agenda until after the planning board completes seeker, because the ZVA won't be able to do anything.
Okay.
It's a type-two action? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's type-two.
You're right, I keep forgetting that. Yes, so yes, the answer is yes, you can.
Okay, I think, I think we'll try to do that.
Sorry about that.
The other thing is the, the architecture, you do the architecture review here, right? That's not a separate meeting? Has that, has anything been done on that? Do we need to know? Is there anything we can discuss related to architecture?
We've invited the board to talk about it tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just going to touch on to a couple of things from AKRS memo on the traffic items. So actually, Eric mentioned about the bollards, one of the other pieces of that was just making some changes to the, some of the striping that's coming out of the drive-through area there, so that, I think, is a, no issue on that one. We're going to look into, there was a question about parking on Saturday, we're going to look into that a little bit further, and we'll provide you with some more data for the next meeting. There were some detailed comments on the traffic analysis for the driveways, specifically some of the factors that are in our analysis. I've done a preliminary look at that, and we'll provide some more information for the next meeting, but we don't really see that that's going to change the analysis results, but again, we'll provide that information. And then we noticed that there were some DOT comments that were provided via email from DOT. That information that they requested is generally available in the studies that we've already provided, that are prepared, but we will respond accordingly with some detailed information for them, and, and provide a copy of that to the, to the town as well.
Eric?
Sure. Yep, as Mike pointed out, it's a type-two action, so there is no seeker review on this. The, let's see, the Dutchess County of Planning did issue an incomplete response, responsive that the application was incomplete due to the lack of photometrics. We haven't received the lighting plan yet, the board may want to, well, that, so it would require a super majority of the board in order to act positively on the application. The, also, we would note that, we're still, the applicant had said that they would provide, excuse me, evidence of the owner, owner and applicant's authority to sign the affidavits for this application, we haven't, those are forthcoming, we haven't received them yet.
I, actually, we got those this week, so I can send those over to you.
Okay, that would be very helpful. We suggest that, the recommendation tonight, therefore, is for deferral, but recommend to have some discussion, in particular with regard to the screening, and what the board is looking for there, both in terms of how much screening, and what it's, and how large it should be at the time of planting, or how long, or for how long it should be before it matures to the point of providing that screening. And also on the, some of the pedestrian circulation issues that were highlighted, the recommendation was for a gate, because the only use of that northern access, the only absolute need for it is by a fuel delivery truck, and the traffic consultant had, had noted that while not significant, there are traffic, there are potential conflicts between incoming traffic, most likely from Winslow Gate, and pedestrians, and the, and the queue will occasionally, by the applicant's submittal, the queue will occasionally extend beyond what's shown in the diagram, so there will sometimes be a conflict between the queue and traffic entering at that curb cut. And the raised crosswalk didn't seem very significant to staff, that, given that it's only one and a half inches.
It was actually, it was curb height, it was a six-inch, but because it's a downhill, you're putting the ramp on a downhill, so it looks like it's smaller from the uphill, but it's bigger looking at it from downhill.
Okay. And then lastly, just based on the applicant's suggestion, for some of the, the other alternatives sound perfectly reasonable to look at, as far as the alternative to bollards and, and the planter, I'll defer to the comments by the traffic engineer on, on those. There are comments, I think, from engineering and from traffic, none from engineering, oh, that's right, you're all set, and from the traffic engineer, I think, had some comments.
Okay. Alex, are you still on?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Nicole. Again, it sounds like the comments have all been run through briefly. Again, going back to the site plan, again, it sounds like the request for the additional pavement markings has been, will be addressed. The issue with the bollards, the recommendation with the curb extension, sounds feasible. I think that would basically accomplish what we were looking for, just as another deterrent for vehicles entering that drive-through lane through the wrong direction, so that sounds adequate. And then, in terms of the Saturday parking demand, it sounds like that was mentioned as well, so we'll look forward to revised materials on that as well. And additionally, I believe, the peak hour factor inputs, we discussed, and it was our agreement as well, that likely it would not result in any fundamental changes in the conclusions of the traffic study, was just more of a technical comment. So it sounds like the comments that we've outlined in our, in our memorandum will be addressed in the next mission. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
And also, the, this isn't a continuation of the public hearing tonight, so that phrase was omitted from the... was omitted from the review, but the board should open the public hearing, and if it intends to defer, it should adjourn.
Okay. I move that we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Could you stop sharing your screen, actually, for a moment, just so we can see who's on and who would like to comment? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on this application? No? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to comment on this application? You're on Zoom, you can unmute yourself or raise your hand.
Okay. Seeing none, I adjourn the public hearing to, are you guys coming back in August?
Well, the deadline for submittal for August is next Monday, so that may be a little tight, so.
We do have the lighting plan.
Oh, you do?
Be ready by that time. We have additional documents to take a look at and discuss.
So, coming back for August? Okay, so I adjourn the public hearing to August 18th, 2022.
Second.
I hear a second. Called the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's go around the room. Peter, do you have any comments?
No, I think we're making good progress here. I have one question for you under the planting schedule. We have a plant called Green Giant. Is that an arbor beating?
Yeah.
My suggestion would be that three to four feet would not be adequate there. I mean, normally, we like to see at least six to eight feet.
That could be adequate.
All right, terrific.
Yeah, we chose that because it's a fast-growing variety.
It's not that fast. Thanks.
Ben, do you have any comments or questions?
I do. You have a crosswalk down here, I guess it's toward the south, and although it's a striped crosswalk, you're probably going to get people coming from the Home Depot or the Ocean State Coffee Drinkers and things. I think it'd be a good idea to have some kind of sign there for caution for pedestrians, because people see a, you know, painted crosswalk, they don't pay that much attention to it while they're driving. But if there was a sign there too, it might be more obvious for safety.
You could add the pedestrian sign.
Something that lets cars know that there's going to be people crossing there from the parking lot.
Right.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Steve?
I just want to compliment the applicant. I think the curved island is a very good add for that traffic flow, so I do like that idea very much.
Okay. I think you guys covered a lot of the things that I had questions or concerns about. My only other question is, do you really need eight signs? Especially the round DD sign, is that really needed? Because it seems like overkill.
Yeah, we work with Dunkin' Donuts to prepare the sign package, so we could certainly address them and see if they're willing to tone that down a bit. You know, we'll take another look at the.
Did anyone else have any concerns about how many signs they wanted to put up? Or was everyone else okay with it?
I do want to point out that it will have to go to the ZBA still.
Yeah, absolutely.
And my guess is that they will also have questions about the number of signs, so.
Yeah. And then, most of these are plaza-facing, so they are screened from nine, mainly to attract other customers within that plaza.
Yeah, absolutely. I just thought, like, especially in the front of the building, you have Chestnut, and then you have Mobile. And I didn't know if you could combine them, Chestnut on top, Mobile on the bottom, to be one sign instead of two, because someone has their vision, and they're looking over here at Chestnut, and then they're also looking over here at Dunk. I mean, you know, obviously, you need to go to zoning, and they will have their own comments, but I just thought maybe you could actually combine some of those, so.
We'll look into options for that.
Okay. All right, great. Yeah.
I move that the planning board defer further action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following, one through 10.
Second.
It was seconded, called the question. To defer, all those in favor?
Aye.
Four to defer. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you next month. Next up is Eastdale Village Lot Line Revision, 9WA, 9WB, reapproval.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Again, Jeff Kane, representing the Eastdale Village, and I want to apologize. I feel as if I wasted the board's time. You approved a lot line revision. I let it expire, and we're asking for a reapproval. If I can share my screen here, I will show you the lot line again. So, again, this is lots 9A and 9WA and 9WB. These are on the west side of the project in this area. That's, that's outlined by this, by the red area. It's the area of the new ambulatory surgery center. So, it's the two lots, one that housed the former Ortega House, and then the, and the new ambulatory surgery center. So, really what happens is 0.49 acres go from lot 9WA to lot 9WB. So, we end up with a 0.217 acre parcel and a 1.170 parcel. Larger parcel, again, will encompass all of the lot area for the ambulatory surgery center. That's it, thank you.
Eric?
Sure. Yeah, it's a, it's effectively a reapproval, although the, we've laid out a procedure for adopt, for approving it as a new one, in part because of a couple of technical changes within the application. So, the recommendation is to go through the iterations of finding a resolution of SEACER consistency, accepting the lot, the changes to bulk as permitted as, excuse me, within the board's discretion, and grant lot line revision. Jeff, I guess the only question I might have is, was the intent to file, you had talked previously about possibly combining, combining site plans? So, I just wasn't certain when this comes in, if the intent is for the bulk, the tables on this plat, are they intended to, are they going to conform to the, they should conform to whatever site plan is then current at the time of signature?
Yes, I, the, I guess the history here is when we had the 19th site plan approval, that was really modified, the 17th site plan approval, so we're combining 17, 18, and 19 in one application to you. That's all sitting in front of the Health Department right now, since the Health Department has completed their review. It'll come to you, and yes, that bulk table on 17, 18, 19 is what will be the bulk table on the lot line revision. Thank you.
Okay. Andy, did you have anything?
No, I have nothing to add.
All right. You want to go around the room? Peter, do you have anything?
No.
Ben?
No.
Anything? Steve?
No comment.
Anything? No comment? Okay. And I have no comment either, it's a reapproval. If you could go ahead and motion.
I move that the planning board find the reapproval of the lot line revision for lots 9WA and 9WB involve incremental changes to the Eastdale Village project of negligible budget, a magnitude and scope that are non-significant and consistent with the SEACER resolutions of consistency adopted February 22nd, 2022, May 19th, 2022, and June 16th, 2022.
Second.
Okay, adoption of SEACER, motion has been set and seconded. All those, called the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, four to zero. Go ahead with the second.
I move that the planning board find that the proposed modifications of the area, yard, and bulk provisions of 210-27 are consistent with the goals and objectives of the town plan and charter 210 pertaining to the extent and purposes of the MHC district pursuant to 210-27I10, and that the planning board grant conditional lot line revision approval valid for 60 days for a lot, a lot line alteration between lot 9W, as shown on the filed map number 8062B, and the lands of MHTC Development LLC, Eastdale Village West, and also grant a 60-day time extension of said approval from September 19th, 2022, forward to November 18th, 2022, subject to the following. Respond to all comments of all reviewing departments and agencies, said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness, including but not limited to items 1 through 5.
Can you repeat that? No. Second, if you say please.
It's been moved and seconded. Called the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be more diligent on my timeframes there.
That's okay. All right, next up, Eastdale Village, 20th Site Plan Amendment and Subdivision of Lot 2E, SEACER review, minor subdivision, and amended site plan hearing.
Thank you again. So, this is really the 20th Site Plan Amendment, but it, I'll say that the, it's only a Site Plan Amendment because there's a subdivision. Other than that, there really aren't any site plan changes. This is on the, on the east side of the, of the project. 44 is here across the top. Again, you can see generally the outlined area that we're talking about. Lot 2E currently encompasses townhouses 12, 13, 14, and 15, and then the yellow house, the Ortega House, however you want to, want to refer to it. That's what's in Lot 2E. For financing purposes, the banks have asked that the new construction be separated from the existing Ortega House. So, and I cheated, I rotated this to fit on the, fit on the sheet better, so you can see 44 on the, on the left side of the screen here. But we have a 0.229 acre lot for the, for your Ortega House, and a 2.165 acre lot that'll have townhouses 12, 13, 14, and 15. This, this lot will be developed under the open development provisions of the, of the town code. Other than that, it's a, it's a, it's a conforming application. And again, it's really for financing purposes, no site plan changes, no utility changes, no additional square feet, additional dwelling units. It's, it's simply a, a site plan, I'm sorry, simply a subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric?
We've prepared a resolution of approval. Staff would agree with everything Jeff said. It's treated procedurally, it's treated as a major subdivision, just because of the look-back provision in the subdivision law, so there's a slightly longer resolution as a result, but it's consistency and approval.
Okay. Andy, do you have anything?
We're just looking for an updated subdivision plat before final approval. That's it. Nothing to add.
I move that we open the public hearing.
Second.
Seconded, called the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, four to zero. Is there anyone that would like to comment on Eastdale Village, 20th Site Plan Amendment?
Jeff, if you wouldn't mind stopping the share for just a minute, so we can see anyone on the Zoom? Not many people left in the audience, so I think we're okay.
Okay. I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Called the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Four to zero to close. Okay, let's go around the board. Peter, do you have any comments or questions?
I just have one question. I'm not really sure, with a comment here from the zoning administrator regarding the use of the building, and a question about what regards or what constitutes a family, I'm not really sure if she's saying that it's just okay, or whether it's subject to
My understanding is that, I think she's identifying what the limitations on the occupancy of the home would be. She hasn't identified any required action by the board with, or by the applicant.
Okay. Last one, any question?
Okay. Ben, do you have any questions? No? Steve?
No further comment.
Okay. I don't have any comments either. Go ahead and motion.
I move that the planning board find that the Eastdale Village 20th amended site plan and subdivision of Lot 2E application involves incremental changes to the Eastdale Village project of negligible magnitude and scope, and are non-significant and consistent with the previous SEACER filings adopted March 15th, 2018, and amended September 17th, 2020, as modified by the proposed Eastdale Village application received June 28th, 2022.
Second.
Okay, seconded for SEACER resolution of consistency. Called the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Four to zero.
I move that the planning board find that proposed modifications to the area, yard, and bulk provisions of 210-27 are consistent with the goals and objectives of the town plan and charter 210 pertaining to the intent and purposes of the MHC district pursuant to 210-27I10, and that the planning board grant conditional preliminary and final major subdivision approval for the final subdivision plat showing the re-subdivision of Lot 2A as shown on filed map number 11947C, Eastdale Village East, subject to the following.
Second?
Second. Doesn't that say respond to the comments?
Well, go around to that as well.
Second.
Okay, so, seconded to grant preliminary and major subdivision approval. Called the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Four to zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional site amendment approval for the Eastdale Village 20th amended site plan following, subject to the following. Respond to all comments of all reviewing departments and agencies, said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness, including but not limited to the following, 1 through 9.
Seconded to grant conditional amended site plan approval. Called the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure we'll see you soon.
But not in August.
Yeah.
I like 20.
All right, next up, we have Storage Depot.
Good evening, Ken Casameta from LRC. How are you today?
Good, how are you?
Good. If I may share my screen. You guys can see that, correct? Can you hear me?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, sorry. I just didn't know if you saw it. So, as you know, we were here before, the board, with regards to the self-storage facility located at 35 Page Park Drive. Three conventional storage buildings totaling 32,600 square feet. The existing conditions, the majority of the site that's being redevelopment is currently a paved parking lot area. We've worked with some of the comments. I know we do have some more to work out and through with regard to some of the fire with regard to hydrant, to make sure we have a location there for, for, that meets the fire department regulations, which we don't think we'll have any problem with, because there is a water main that does go across the front, which we found out since the last time we were in front of the board. were in front of the board. Also, one of the comments with regard to parking, when we did the parking calculation, as you can see in the table, we only used some of the buildings mainly because we didn't need to show it on all of them because we met the criteria there. But there is room on each of the buildings to have parking, and we can add that on all of it so that it shows equivalent. And they are, they do meet ADA because they are parallel out parking so they can step out from the side. These lots, these units here are only entered from the one side. This section of units over here are entered from both sides. And the vehicle, proposed outdoor vehicle storage area that's in the back corner, this area here would not impede any of the fire department movements as well. We would be requesting a variance for the side yard. It's currently required at fifty, and we're at thirty-two-point-eight feet in that area. We've provided some landscaping and lighting, typical lighting around the buildings. We have some truck turn movements, and as noted in some of the comments, that, you know, from George, we didn't meet the full four-hundred all the way through on building C, so we'll work to make sure we had a hydro on each end of the building to make sure that that gets covered for him. And elevations, they're pretty standard structures. I mean, you've guys seen enough of them now coming through in front of the board. So that's where we are, and just wanted to update the board and keep seeing if we can move forward.
Okay, great, thanks. Kristen?
Thank you. Thanks, Ken. What'd you, drew the short straw for the meeting. I know Kelly's been here before. So the application's on for a seeker review, special use permit review, site plan review, and architectural review. And in my capacity as town planner, that only reviews storage projects, I'm happy to be here reviewing it for you. The, the planning board did circulate its intent to be lead agency for a type-one action. It is subject to a coordinated review. The planning board declared its intent to be lead agency on June sixteenth, and to date, no objections have been received. With respect to the special use permit review, this is more informational and anecdotal, and just to highlight my consistency with, again, storage projects. The, the application previously, or my review previously identified the special use permit review as to needing to adhere to BH zoning district requirements. This is actually located in the IH district. It was a carryover. So just to clarify that mistake. So that said, the way that the special use permit review code requirements are written, there's actually no specific reference to the parking or lighting. That said, we do review parking and lighting as part of our standard site plan review. So as it stands right now, the lighting is adhering to town code, and that also alleviates the stringent nature of parking. The parking requirements fall to a more general code section, and so that also said it's one-point-five parking spaces per one-thousand square feet, and the planning board would have discretion over granting some leniency to that. And I think that the calculation that was already provided actually is beneficial for the board's consideration. So just wanted to clarify that as part of the record.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, and then just some, some other site plan related comments. I think we'll just clean up the plans a little bit more. I know that, again, there were several other department comments. I mean, I already know that we got comments back from county planning, and it was local concern. And so this evening, the application's on for a public hearing, so staff is recommending that you open the public hearing, adjourn the public hearing, and defer action. And that, the board should also just take note of the architectural information that was provided. You may want to request of the applicant some additional information, or the images might suffice. I, you know, leave that for you to discuss and ask of the applicant. And then, based on the discussion and how this sort of goes, again, the submission deadline would be, for the August meeting, would be on Monday, so I'm not sure if that's sufficient time to turn around. I know there are things like a SWIP that still have to come in. So again, I've provided both dates, so you could discuss that with the applicant.
Okay. Andy?
Sure. So our, probably our biggest outstanding comment is, is the need for a SWIP. We'll need that before we can move forward. We also have some comments about the, the existing site management plan. We'd like to kind of, we'd like to see that. I didn't see it in previous submissions, if I, unless I missed it.
Can I just interject on that, Andy, real quick?
Sure.
If that's all right. The, the, the area that is of concern, and let me just bring this back up real quick, is not on this parcel. It is on an adjoining parcel that is. Oops, gotta run through it. Bear with me. So you can see it. There it is. The area in purple, which is the back lot on the other, and the area in red, which is our proposed lot over here, the area in red is the CEA map, which is from the New York State D E C that's identified as the area of concern, which is identified in the, but it's also been completed from Page Industrial. So that area is not on our subject area or the, the property.
Okay. All right. Thanks for clarifying that, Ken.
Yep.
And then the other, the only thing I was hoping, Ken, if, if you might be able to give us an update, there were some discussions about the ownership of the water main in the site. Has there been any movement on that?
There is, they're still working through with Tom, and as to who actually owns that, trying to figure that out. As we know, there may be the need for a transportation corporation because of the multiple lots. So they're working through that solution as best as we can. And as soon as we have an update, we will provide it to the board.
Okay, good. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right. Was Carol, Carol was?
Yes, I am here.
You are here, okay. Did you have anything for this project?
No, I, I just wanted to, I believe to clarify a little bit about the, there are two areas of concern as far as NICE deck with, not the site, but there was a NICE deck certification of completion, and that was a remedial program for the page building in front, the existing storage unit. And the critical environmental area is a page building in the back off of Ireland Drive Extension. So neither of the D E C's existing documentation and of some concern is on the actual site itself. They're, they're flanking it, but none of them are actually of this particular site.
Okay.
And there's a little confusion in some of the documentation, so that's what I was able to find out.
Thank you, Carol, for clarifying.
Okay.
All right. Why don't we go ahead and open the public hearing? I move that the planning board open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Called the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four for opening the public hearing. Is there anyone out there that would like to comment on this particular project?
Anyone on the Zoom wish to comment on this one?
Okay. Seeing none, I move the planning board adjourn to public, the public hearing to August eighteenth, twenty-two.
Why don't we check with Ken? Ken, are you going to be able to have this in Monday? Like with the SWIP?
So, so that was one of the questions I was going to ask you real quickly, is we, we will have, I have the full SWIP prepared to submit for Monday. Anyway, and I have plans. We have not readdressed all of the comments that are in, that we just recently received, but I would like to submit this SWIP at least to allow Andy to review, which seems to be the majority of the potential outstanding items that he has. And if we can work through before the meeting with George to alleviate some of the fire, then we, the location of the hydrants, then we eliminate some of George's concerns as well before the meeting. But I would not be able to have a full set of plans for you.
Okay, so then you want to adjourn the public hearing to September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two?
Yes.
Okay. I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
What I was gonna suggest is we could move forward with Seeker because they do have to go to the Z B A. So if they can resubmit and it satisfies, satisfies.
Well, because you think the SWIP is really the, the only issue for seeker purposes?
It's, it's just a suggestion, but.
No, no, that's, that's fine. I think we could do that, right?
So then you want August? Is that, is that?
And I mean, that pretty much puts the burden back on you, Ken, because the SWIP has to be, you know, in substantially complete format in order to accept Seeker, so.
Understood. But I mean, we have it ready to submit, so we're, that would be greatly appreciated on our part to help keep the project moving.
Just as long as you understand that we'd be deferring action on the rest of the application. This is just to enable you to be able to go to the Z B A.
Right, which we knew anyway. We need to get there, and we do appreciate you helping us get there.
Okay, great. So I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Call, seconded. Called the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. To adjourn. Peter, did you have any comments or questions?
Just one, and I'd like the town engineer to take a look at this. You have two buildings that are three-hundred-and-ten feet long, and you have a third building that's two-hundred-and-sixty feet long. You have three areas that are shaded for snow storage. And I just want you to get together with the applicant and take a look at that and see, you know, if you feel comfortable. When you look at the way that the aisles are configured, and having to move snow around the, around the end of those aisles all the way down to the snow storage areas, whether or not you think that that is practical or not. I mean, the aisles are thirty feet wide. That's a lot of snow. Absolutely. We'll look at that. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Ben, do you have any questions? Okay, Steve?
No other comment.
No other comments? Okay, and I, I wanted to see the, the, the new proposed fence. I don't know if you have a picture of that.
I don't. I know, I know Kristen's comment asked for it, but I, I can have that for you for the next meeting. I don't have it today.
And did you have any signage details?
At, at the moment, we aren't proposing any signage.
No signage at all, okay. Okay, and I have this here, but I feel like I, I mentioned this last time, that the backflow prevention needed to be done.
Yeah, it's, it's coming due. Tom notes that in his documentation. As Andy said, we're working through the ownership of the entire water line, so that's part of that whole subject.
Okay. All right. Other than that, I think that's all I had. Ready for a motion?
I move that the planning board defer further action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments in writing of the planning board and those received from the town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following one through twelve.
Moved and seconded to defer. Called the question?
Aye.
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 Four to zero for deferment. Thanks, Ken.
Thank you. I'm not going too far though, because.
Oh, you're not? Okay, so you're up next, all space?
Yes.
Okay.
I always know I get this up on screen. As you know, we were before you, before, and we took the opportunity after the last meeting to meet with Carol and kind of walk through some of the, the major concerns that Carol had. This was the previous, the submitted plan, and as you know, we had up to building X, and we were relatively close to the wetland buffer, or the wetland itself, excuse me, around the entire development area. The, taking the comments from the board and from Carol, we took a look at how to redevelop the plan. We talked to the owners and redeveloped the size of the buildings slightly wider, which allowed us to actually drop one building from the, the project. It also allowed a little bit of a rotation on the, what would be the south side of the project, the bottom of the page, to the units. And what that did was prevent some of the grading going towards the residential as much as it did before. We did reduce the hard surface in this by about eighteen thousand square feet, and, and in certain areas, especially out over in here and over in this area over here, we removed quite a bit of impact in the buffer area. Talking with this, how this came about, talking to Carol, and she can attest and talk to this when she speaks as well, but the area in here, which is basically a ditch, this area here was not of high-quality wetlands, and we felt it was more appropriate to fill more of it and pipe it through, which you'll see in the drainage plan, and relocate those plants to an area that's over here, highlighted over here in this area. In addition, through talking with Carol, we, we did add a buffer to the wetland because as Carol pointed out in her last comments, we're right on the threshold of an acre. So we just considered it over and used the twenty-five-foot buffer for the aquatic resource permit. This would, whoops, sorry. As you can see here, the square footages are almost the same. We're slightly less than what was there before at forty-three-five-thirty-two previously proposed to forty-three-three-forty-five now. What it does do, though, is increases the separation to Grand, which went from thirty-five-point-four to fifty-three-point-nine, which we know was a concern in that direction. We do increase the, slightly decrease the residential for the structure, but as you can see, when we look at the grading and the profile, it, it doesn't impact as much with the grading up the hill as it did before towards that residential structures to the south. There is a slight increase from six-one-thousands, it was really tiny before, to point-oh-three acres. Now, we do have point-three acres of buffer impact that is proposed as part of that, that is identified here in the hatched areas on the side over there.
Okay, thank you.
I consider the cross-sections as we did before with the proposed trees, it does pull it slightly away and sets it off fairly nicely with the side of the building rather than the long end of the building. And with the rail trail, as we said before, the rail trail's considerably lower than the proposed project, and there's a natural buffer of trees in here as well as the proposed trees that we're providing, so we feel it's fully screened in that direction as well. As you can see, these are the colors, very consistent to what was there before, and that's where we're at.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Eric?
Thank you.
Sure. This is just a discussion item for the board. So the, so the, I'll just note that the setback of a hundred feet from residential districts is subject to planning board discretion. It's not a variance. The standards do require screening from the public roadway. The North Grand House locations, we would encourage the next submittal to show the, a sightline to the North Grand Avenue House, House locations as they did for the residents of Pell Road, and to, you know, identify the building setback from the R twenty district boundary on North Grand. And then the planning board should discuss what screening they're looking for, and again, you know, how much are you looking for at planting versus later. We also just suggest the planning board might want to discuss with the applicant, the E I F last time mentioned rock crushing on the site with the excavation, and so the applicant might want to just discuss with the board, you know, what is, what does that mean for the surrounding residences?
Thank you. Andy?
Sure. One thing I noticed on the, on the plan that you submitted, Ken, is that you're showing dual fifteen-inch pipes for that, where you're filling in the ditch. Can you talk about that? Why, why dual pipes and not a single large pipe?
Cover. Because if, if we're, we went larger pipes, we, we wouldn't have the sufficient cover. We'd have to raise the site and cause more potential fill, and it impacts that way. So we, we had looked at the area there and thought that it would be more appropriate to run dual pipes next to each other than running a single larger pipe and filling more area in, in there.
Understood. Okay. And then earlier this week, we had, we had emailed a little bit, and you sent me some, some of your soil test results for the, the underground infiltration chambers. It looked like.
infiltration chambers. Um, it looked like, uh, some spots had plenty of, um, depth to the rock and water, uh, but there were some others mostly near buildings S and U where it was tight. Are you confident that the chambers are going to work out, um, in, in those, in that area where it's shown?
We are, we are comfortable that they're gonna work, um, based on historic knowledge of, of, from the contractor as well that had done some site work up there. Um, as I noted there, we, with the adjustment of the plans, we do plan on going back out, um, to do a couple additional tests up in that area as well to further confirm that for you and the, and the design.
Good, thank you. Um, other than that, I think the layout's great. Uh, you know, the reduction impervious is always a good thing, um, especially from a stormwater perspective. So, um, I mean, I think it looks fine.
Okay. Uh, Carol?
Well, um, I was going to go through a lot of the, um, the improvements, uh, the changes in, in grading and setbacks. Um, this is a much improved site plan. Um, I did have a concern, again, as Andy just asked about the, the dual culvert as, you know, with wetlands and, uh, while up here we're looking for, you know, single pipe, squash pipe, something, uh, open bottom. Um, so that was, uh, you know, it, it can't be done, it can't be done. If, uh, if you could just look into that, just see if we can get a squash pipe or something in there, it would be, it would be preferred. Um, we've also asked, um, that that pipe be set slightly above the existing, um, outlet elevation, not that it's, it's accurate, because, uh, you know, it's, it's just a ditch, but we feel that by, by raising that somewhat, and there's going to be a, a headball off the pipe, we can actually restore some of the probably pre-existing wetland from that area and improve some of the conditions that are there, as well as give some area, um, restoration area for these, these plants that they're going to take out of the, um, the ditch and plant in, in the wetland buffer. So they're going to degrade it and increase the hydrology for about six inches. Um, that should, that should, um, it's an, it's an improvement over what is there. Um, the modified layout also improved the fence. The fence used to run, basically, it used to enclose the entire wetland within the property, within the, the, uh, the storage unit parcel. Um, the fence now runs basically along the twenty-five-foot buffer, so it still allows builders to, to utilize that aquatic resource. They were meaning an army corps permit, uh, for the disturbance, but in fact, and ends as well as a, a town issued, uh, aquatic resource permit, but the, the mitigation that they're doing between, um, increasing the hydrology by raising the pipe and by, uh, restoring married vegetation that will account for, that, it's actually restoration or creation of additional wetland, so that's, that's a plus. Um, do check with Andy again when you're, when you're doing those infiltration chambers. That is still a slight concern about, you know, draining the wetland, especially that one infiltration chamber that's between, that's, that's closest to the wetland. Um, but I, I think the plan is a, is, is a much, much improved over the previous plan, and happy to see you, and we'll continue to work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
And, and we appreciate your assistance in helping get this to fruition from what we had before.
No problem.
Yeah, the public hearing was adjourned to, to today last time, so we, we don't should have.
Okay. I move that we open the public hearing.
Second.
Seconded, called the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
If anyone is online or?
There's someone.
Yep, okay.
So, um, so yeah, looking at the, if, we can just get the plans up, because I, I didn't want to look at them again.
Ken, can you put the plans back up?
Can I look at the plans again? The, the, the emergency roadway is still my concern as far as like where it's going to be placed. Um, the grading, uh, from the road going up, I was trying to look at the plans the other day. I couldn't make the details of it, like which way it was going up. It was going, you know, going to go up on the road and then down, or, I mean, leveling, and, and then it's going to be leveled, and then the building is going to be lower. Ken, what's already there? Building?
Which one are you referring to?
W.
W?
Yeah.
Ken, can you, uh?
And the existing five hundred that's there, which, where is it on the, on that? That's it right there?
Right here, where the hand of the cursor is. I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing.
Oh, that's a, I'm sorry, I wasn't close to it.
No, that's fine.
So that's, that's where the existing, uh, fire hydrant is, yes?
Correct.
Okay.
It's between the fire hydrant and there's an existing pole there on the, that side of the site, the north end of the property.
Okay.
Northeast end.
So right there where your cursor is, right there, as far as, because that's from the roadway from North Grand, is it going to be higher? Is that building going to sit higher, or is it going to go into?
So at that section there, it comes up to two-ten. It comes up five feet, but here, right by the letter N in D is two-ten, is equal grade. So this whole road of North Grand drops down.
Okay.
As we go to the northwest, northeast. So this site, it, the grade of two-eleven is almost equal to this section here. Um, hold on, I'll see if I can do this real quickly.
Yeah, did, did you have like a profile, uh?
So, this here is level.
Okay.
From here, and then this keeps rising, and this stays down. So this area in here, which is existing, and we haven't, we're not touching anything outside of the fence, is going to remain, and is, is, is increases in height. So at the, this end here, this is elevation two-twenty. Where the, where the second blue line is.
And then, and then you're proposing as far as like where the fence runs along the side there, that's all going to be, uh, evergreen or whatever, whatever canopy you're right there?
Correct.
So on the other side, like we wouldn't be able to see, like during the wintertime or whenever?
Correct. It is inside the fence, so that we're minimizing the impacts outside and, and keeping as little, uh, as much as the native vegetation that is there as we can.
Okay. Okay, I like the way it looks.
Could I, could I ask you, do you live across from building W? Can you see which building that is?
Uh, building, uh, it's, yeah, pretty much like right across, up a little where north with, uh, I guess a G in Grand, like right around.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, thank you.
So if you ever want to come on, take a look and see what it looks like from there, go ahead. But, uh, thank you, thank you. That's all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment on this project? Okay. Uh, Ken, when do you think you would come back for this? Would it be August or September?
Uh, we would be here in August. We have a full submission ready to go for Monday. Just was waiting to hear from the board tonight, and if we needed to include anything new into it, uh, and, so yes, we'll be, we'll be here for?
And the, you know, August?
Uh, August.
August, Ken, that'll have, uh, full landscaping plan and, and water lighting and the whole nine yards, right? Yeah.
A, a full, complete development plan, just as we had before.
Okay.
Okay. So.
Including the profiles and everything like that, with updated profiles.
Okay. So I move that we adjourn the public hearing to August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
It's been seconded, called the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.
You too.
Wait, 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 wait. Don't we want to get the board's comments? Did we get every comment's?
Oh, yeah, we did. I'm sorry. Hold, hold on, Ken, I'm sorry.
No, no problem.
Peter, do you have any comments on this project?
Uh, just two comments. One is I know that, uh, the town engineer has expressed some concern about the efficacy of the infiltration chambers, so I know we want to take a close look. Not that the applicant is comfortable, but we should be also be comfortable about the, the usefulness of those. The other thing again is the adjacent homeowners, this is a significant upzoning. It's, I know it's up to the town board, but eventually you're going to have to come back to us. Um, and that is, uh, you know, the, there are at least four adjacent property owners on the south end of this property who are going to be facing this development. It's one thing to face multifamily property, an apartment building, uh, where we have a, a, a lot more opportunity to mitigate the architecture and design. This type of use, we really don't have that kind of flexibility, and I think, uh, in deference to the, and in consideration of the people who own the property adjacent to this, particularly on the south end, uh, or actually all the adjacent property owners, you know, you got to come up with some kind of design idea, because, because of the, the difference in elevation between those homes on, on, uh, North Grand and this site is significant. So no matter what kind of planting that you use there, I mean, it would take many years, uh, for any, any kind of use. So some kind of a design idea, uh, on your part, you know, to make this more acceptable. Otherwise, I don't see, you know, how we can do this. It's just not, I just don't see that it's appropriate for those people, and the effect it will have on the value of their homes. You have to look at that in their backyard, you know, for, for most of the year. So that's my comment.
Okay. Ben?
No.
Nothing? Steve?
No additional comment.
No. And I, I also want to reiterate what Peter said. Obviously, we do want to keep in mind our neighbors. Um, so thank you, Ken, and we will see you again in August.
Uh, if, if I, Ken, real quick, I know Tucker is a few, uh, down, but I just give a quick update to the board?
Uh, we actually have a few things before that.
Okay, I'll wait.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, next up, we have some adjournments. Uh, tw- two forty-four, Boardman Road, Dish Network, five G. I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
It's been seconded, called the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eight Tucker Drive. I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ken, did you have something to state about this?
Um, I was going to tell you if you wanted to move it to September, because I know we won't be able to make the August meeting.
You want it actually for September. Okay.
Yep.
So that would be September? That'd be September fifteenth?
Yes.
Okay.
We have, uh, been working with the DEC, um, as to, to trying to work through their concerns, uh, which stem from, uh, basically trying to protect the cap and that doesn't exist there, uh, from the proposed use. Uh, so we're working with them on providing them with some structural calculations so that we can, you know, indicate that we're not going to cause anything that's worse than what's there today.
Okay.
So it's just, the DEC doesn't work at a very fast pace, so, uh, we're doing our best and trying to push it along, but wanted to give the board an update.
Okay, thanks, Ken.
Thanks, everyone.
So I move then that the planning board adjourn the public hearing for Eight Tucker Drive to September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
It's been seconded, called the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five eleven Hay Avenue. I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
It's been seconded, called the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Arlington Farms Marble Realty LLC. I move that the public hearing be adjourned to September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
It's been seconded, called the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Guardian Self Storage, Love Road. I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
It's been seconded, called the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Delverne Avenue Subdivision Major, uh, Seeker Review, Imperiumary Major Subdivision Review. I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
It's been seconded, called the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
If I may, I would just like to provide the board with a short update, um, as the applicant had, um, stated to me in an email that they are looking to reduce the number of proposed lots for that application.
For Delverne?
Correct, yeah.
Ken?
So they want to?
So it, that, it's just informational at this point. I haven't seen anything, uh, but I thought that I might add that because it was a recommendation to reduce the number of lots based on a number of comments that were received from multiple departments, um, and, and a couple of conversations with the planning board. So just wanted you to know that that is actively underway.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, at this time, I would ask for a motion to allow public comment on any of other items on tonight's agenda. We ask that you please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. The planning board will consider any comments made during the portion of this meeting, but will not respond to them during the meeting.
Second.
It's been seconded, called the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there anyone out there that would like to talk about any remaining projects?
Do we have anybody? Yeah.
All right. Seeing none, I move that we continue our normally scheduled meeting.
Second.
Moved in second, called the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up is Soto Palermo Lot Line Revision. He was here.
He was here?
Yeah. Um, I wonder if he's outside. Hold on.
It's a full-service planning board. Checking the parking lots. Peter's out there. Thank you, Peter.
Maybe.
You got him? All right.
You didn't have the hook?
I could have probably covered it for him.
Sorry about that, guys. You went through that a lot faster than I thought.
Joseph Chmody, on behalf of the Sotos.
If you could just speak right into the mic, that would be awful.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead.
So I received the, uh, planning board, uh, letter of items that are still, uh, necessary, so I'm working on that. So if I could just ask for the August calendar.
Okay. All right. Uh, Kristin?
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. Um, there's just a, a number of items based on the town code section. We spoke already and kind of went through that. Um, so we'll just, uh, get some cleaned up, you know, survey and descriptions, and, um, we'll take another look at the application. Um, and, uh, because this isn't on for a public hearing or anything, um, you would just be looking to submit, uh, when you're ready and have those materials ready.
Absolutely.
So, uh, the August meeting is, uh, the eighteenth, but the submission deadline for that is Monday. I don't know.
Everyone, I don't mean to interrupt. Can you hear? We, I can't hear on the call. I don't know if anyone else on the Zoom can hear.
Ah.
We've lost audio again. We are static.
All right, hang in there. I'm going to give Lisa Cobb the controls, she was so diligent.
Oh, goodness.
Don't worry, I've been reporting this to IT.
In real time.
As we sit here, in real time. Getting better at this, though.
They might put you in the IT department. Watch out.
Yeah, yeah, right. Then they'll be really scared.
Recording in progress.
Can you hear us now?
Yes, I can hear you now. And I just want to say I have a conflict on this matter. I'm going to disappear for the next couple of minutes.
Okay.
All right, um, should I?
Yep.
Go ahead, continue. Okay, all right. So let me just recap. The application is on for Seeker Review and a Lot Line Revision Review. We're talking about the Soto Palermo Lot Line Revision. Um, we're just looking for, um, some more information, uh, some, a cleaned up survey, um, following town code procedure for a Lot Line Revision Review. Um, so ultimately, we've already had the discussion with the applicants, or one of the applicant's attorneys, um, and, uh, we'll be looking to review an updated application essentially when you're ready. So the submission deadline for the August meeting is on Monday. I don't know if that's, you know, durable, or we can communicate beyond one day, and you could submit for a September appearance. However, you know.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Just to let everybody know what it is, basically what happened was, it's a pie shape that cuts into the backyard. So when they did the original subdivision, it naturally belongs to the Sotos, but for some reason it just pied into their backyard. So it's just cleaning that up.
Okay.
And I think that there might have just been a question from our zoning administrator about. about, I think there's an existing shed.
There is an existing shed that belongs to the Sotos. It's under the building code requirements of 144 square feet. So I'm not sure if that also applies to zoning. So I have to find out if they have the same exemption on that.
Yeah.
Is that the one with the ramp?
Yes.
Okay.
So, you know, it might even be beneficial to have that conversation before you resubmit. We can, I can certainly help to facilitate that conversation when you're ready to have it.
Yeah, that'd be great.
A good point to note, though, is that our zoning administrator is going to be on vacation next week. So we could try to get you in touch with her tomorrow. Otherwise, it might be another week, which is why I'm thinking you're likely going to be submitting for the September meeting.
What's her name?
Chrissy Granieri.
Okay.
Andy, did you have anything on this?
Kristin did it. As usual, a great job covering everything.
Okay. Anyone have any questions around the board?
Only one, and that is we really need a map that shows East Dogwood Drive.
Yes, I'm getting a new survey. That way it's going to clean everything up and satisfy everything that was on the requirement.
Okay. I've got Antoinette Drive. I've got East Drive. I don't have Dogwood Drive.
Okay. Will do.
Ben, did you have anything?
No.
Steve?
No other comment.
No? And I didn't have anything else. Go ahead.
I move that the planning board determine that the proposal meets the criteria for SECR type two action pursuant to SECR Part 617 dot 5C 16, and no further environmental review is required.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for seeker. Called the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four to zero.
I move that the planning board defer action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments in writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following 1 through 9.
Second.
It's been moved to defer. Called the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're all set?
Thank you. Enjoy your night.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have 624 to 626 Main Street.
Hello?
John, I knew you were coming, so I tested the batteries in the remote mic. They are working. Oh, you got to give it a second.
Good evening. My name is John Andrews. I'm with the firm of Rhodey Soika and Andrews. I'm here on behalf of the applicant and owner, Mr. Dan Pedrizzo. And if I can, I'll give you a brief rundown of what we're looking to do. The property in question, pardon me, is 824 to 826 Main. Those of you who are old time Poughkeepsie people, it's the old Spectrum Printing site. It's right next to Planet Wings Pizza Biera. It's across from the old, and again, I'll date myself, Capulis. What we are looking to do is redevelop the site. The existing two-story building is occupied. There's a retail on the first floor. There are apartments on the second floor, and I believe what constitutes the attic. So there's three apartments in that building. The large white building is completely vacant at this point in time. And the issue with this building is it's a very long and narrow building, and it's one story, one story in the front, a little higher story in the back, but essentially a one-story long building. The site itself is fairly tight and contained. There is a centerline alleyway, if you would, about 15 and a half feet wide between the two buildings. There is an existing curb cut there. What our proposal is, is to redevelop this building. What we'd like to do is create two storefronts with access to Main Street, so there'd be two retail or commercial facilities there. And then the back portion, because it is the back, would be to create three apartments, two two-bedroom and one one-bedroom. The site is very tight. We have shown parking for about nine cars. That kind of covers the apartments between the two buildings because there's six apartments total. Your parking is 1.5 times the number of apartments. Doesn't leave us much room for the commercial, but ordinarily apartments your parking would be night. So there's some shared parking opportunities, and there's also parking available, limited parking available on Main Street. The site is already paved in here. It needs to be improved. It's very tight. It's right tight to the property line. We have been working with an architect. We do have a layout. We think it makes sense. It satisfies the goals of the owner. And basically, this is the Main Street end. You would have two side-by-side retail or commercial. The apartments would enter in the back. There would be an exit off to the opposite side. Now, there's a whole series of issues. This does not fit neatly into your ATC zoning district. Staff and your folks kindly worked with us. There's a whole series of issues. We need a special permit. We need a site plan. We will need ultimately architectural review. We will need some variances. Right now, the variances, our site is about a quarter acre. You're allowed up to six dwelling units per acre. We're proposing three new dwelling units. We're going to need a variance because we're short. We don't have parking for the entire occupancy. By my calculation, it's 15. By your zoning administrator's calculation, it's 17. Regardless, we don't need it. We show nine, and we still have matters that have to be addressed. What we wanted to do before we really went too crazy, because most of what goes on here is a matter of interpretation, and quite honestly, as the applicants, our interpretation doesn't matter. It's what the town would like to see and do that actually matters. So we wanted to get this in front of you. We did receive the comments. I will be candid with you, the technical comments, we have no issues with. We know we got to work with water. We know we got to work with sewer. We got to make the parking work. We've got to address the fire department's concerns, some of the technical concerns of you folks. What's more important to us is, is this something you're willing to entertain? And is it something that we can proceed to get the necessary variances to make this happen? There's going to be a couple modifications to our application. One of the ones is, has to do with a building code, and I will tell you, I'm not a building guy. That's why they hire architects. I'm the site guy. But we're probably going to need to make a lot line adjustment, a lot line revision with the lot from the back to give us some additional space at the rear of the structure to allow for emergency, excuse me, egress for our folks out in one of the apartments. So one of the components of our next application will be a lot line revision. The owner actually has, is also owner of that rear parcel, so it makes our life a little easier. And it should be simple, straightforward. We're only looking at about five feet, so it's not a big, it's not a big grab. The parking and the unit count, we do need to go to ZBA. There's also another matter, and I don't purport to understand it, and perhaps Mr. Welty can explain it to us. The way the ATC works, if you have existing apartments above a retail, they don't count toward the total, but you have to make sure they're all legal. And one of the issues that I think the zoning administrator spotted is there's an open space provision. Well, quite honestly, there is no open space on this site. It's either a building or pavement. So that's another potential variance I think we have to go to the ZBA for if we go this route. But I think it makes sense. I think it's a good use of an existing building. We do have some renderings that he has been working with the architect, and I'll let Dan present those.
Want to just hand them out?
We have just put them up, and I think, so you're all familiar with the site. We're just looking to kind of dress it up, clean it up, give it some texture on the front, and, you know, kind of get it to blend with the community. And let's face it, it is a, right now, today, a big gray elephant. You don't see much from the street, and if we clean up the street side and do the renovations, it should be a credit to the surrounding neighborhood. And obviously, he has a vested interest because he's involved in this property, and I found after the application was made, the property's through the rear. So that being said, we're here to get your feelings and to see how we proceed. One request I would make when we're all done, we are not going to make the August meeting. There's a lot of stuff we have to do. But what I would ask you to do is allow your staff to meet with us because we do need to sit down with Kristin. And water and sewer are an issue. I see them on a regular basis, but we do need to sit down with Kristin and Chrissy to iron out the specific details of what we really need to achieve going forward, if that is the pleasure of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Krista?
Thanks, John. So the application's on for a secret review, special use permit review, site plan review, and will ultimately be architectural review. Based on some discussion with our planning board council, we have classified this as an unlisted action subject to an uncoordinated review, which would allow for that ability to participate in a ZBA discussion and sort of go forth, because we can say whatever we want about the site plan, but ultimately, if you don't get those variances, you know, so we have to kind of get the site plan to a point, and then you would go to the ZBA without any holdup, or you can submit concurrently. We thought that would be a good route. So, yeah, you, the applicant certainly hit on a number of the comments that are outstanding, and I think the board has a lot to discuss or consider. For what it's worth, I think it's important. There are several other applications that have come in on Main Street where the planning board has for sure required parking for the residents, not necessarily the commercial or retail space. So I would just consider that as part of your decision-making and discussion. And I think the only thing that wasn't hit on, and forgive me, maybe I missed it. I know you mentioned about the lot line revision, but there is a, I think there's a proposed doorway.
There is one doorway on, I think it's the east side of the building. That's to a mechanical space, and that's if we need an easement, I'm sure we can get an easement to access that. It exists today. It's not, it's not a new doorway. If you were to go out there, it's a doorway today. So we'll wrap that up as well.
Okay.
And I would suspect that it's probably easiest to handle by an ingress and egress access to allow.
Access easement, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
The side door?
Yeah, the east side.
Okay.
And then I know, of course, you're working with a couple of other agencies as well. You'll have to work with County DBW and also Department of Health, I believe. We actually submitted your application to them so that they had the ability to weigh in.
Okay. Ordinarily, since it's connected to water and sewer, we wouldn't normally have to go to them, but we're making some improvements. And once I get the water department and sewer department pinned down as to what's out there, we'll reach out to them.
Sure, yeah. So for now, again, I think it's just important. Obviously, the planning board is interested in understanding the parking dynamic and wants to make sure that there is plenty of parking for the residences that are proposed. The building plans, I know there was some confusion at a meeting earlier this week. Essentially, the one on the left side of your page is the entire building, and the one on the right side is a zoomed-in version. I know that the applicant also mentioned that in the existing structure that's currently being occupied, there's some retail space and three apartments, I believe, and that actually does line up with what our zoning administrator had gone through the assessment documentation and found. So it's six apartments total. And, yeah, at this point, a discussion with the applicant and then staff's recommending a deferral. And actually, for what it's worth, the Department, Dutchess County Department of Planning didn't have any additional comments. So I think it's a, it's a great project to take on and certainly to reuse an existing structure, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Andy, do you have anything?
Just a couple of questions. John, this is obviously an existing site. It appears that the only actual site improvements might be some pavement markings. Is that correct?
The pavement on the alleyway needs some
Okay.
tender loving care.
All right.
But we would, the only improvement we're proposing at this point in time would be to upgrade that pavement and stripe it.
Okay. And then we do, I take that back.
I was going to say.
We are going to upgrade the water service, so we're going to have, we're going to pull out a chunk of concrete in the front. We're going to have to cross, I think, to the opposite side of the road to tap the water main. So we are going to make some improvements out front, but they would be relatively minor.
Right.
You know, it's a five-foot trench, you know.
Yes.
Do what we got to do. And the sanitary line is actually 37 inches off the front of the building. How that happened, I don't know.
Okay. I guess the only other thing, and it didn't make it into my comments, but what, have you had any thoughts about refuse enclosures and how trash would work on this site?
We, in our layout, we're kind of wrestling with that since there is properties around us that have them that he's affiliated with. But when we laid out the parking, we did lay it out. So there's a vacant space back here. This is a handicap space. We have the eight-foot aisle adjacent to the building where there would be an actual door. That gave us another opportunity to stripe off the space and perhaps locate a refuse enclosure back in this corner. However, the engineer in me, I'd like to see that as possibly green space and/or maybe some, since the water drains back there, maybe a little stormwater enhancement. But that is one of the items we have to work through is what we're going to do with refuse.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you. That's all.
Let's go around the board. Peter?
On the map we got, there's a building marked retail just to the west of this building. Is that, do you own that building?
Yeah.
It's on the same site, yes, sir.
Yeah, same parcel.
And they're both part of this application or just the single?
The modification's only to 826.
But the application encompasses the entire parcel, so since they are on both, yes.
Are they both owned by the same entity?
Yes, yes.
In other words, the title to both is the same name?
Yes. It's the same property, yes.
So you're counting the parking spaces here as if it were one property?
Yes.
All right, so I think, just to clarify, so that building, it's labeled retail, but it's actually a mixed-use building, so it's ground floor.
You've been there.
Yeah, okay, right. And it's apartments above. So as Kristin was saying, there's six apartments total in the proposal. What John mentioned was that, you know, under our code, the apartments themselves require nine spaces.
Right.
And that's, you know, what they are able to show here. So that's, yeah.
One other question. That was a printing business for many, many years. Are there any environmental issues there at all? Have you looked at it? Are there any concerns about ink or?
No.
No?
It's a very clean space. All the municipals came back clean. There was no concerns from banks or anybody, so.
Okay, great.
Ben?
You asked if, one other thing. You did a great job with the Pizza Biera?
Biera. Pizza Biera.
You did a really nice job. You're, you know, great.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Ben?
You asked if we would entertain something like this. I don't see how we could discourage anybody from approving anything in the Arlington District, especially on Main Street there. But.
Okay. I'm sitting down.
You'd have to be a Houdini or some kind of magician to get this done, but I encourage you, I hope you get it all approved and worked out. There's a lot to be done here, and we would like to see it happen.
Appreciate it.
I think a recurring comment that I had heard, and even just internally, it was like, snow storage, which, you know, are you amenable to trucking off-site immediately? Like, how are you handling that now?
I have all the properties over there, so like, we do lose a couple spaces, but I'm able to haul it out. I'm getting a skid steer for this winter because now it is very tight. So getting snow removed out of this lot.
I mean, obviously, you wouldn't have very happy tenants if you weren't, you know, so, but, yeah.
One of the things we're also toying with, if we do open up and adjust the lot line to the rear, which appears we have to, we may end up adding an easement and a gate so that we have access between the properties and make that his life easier. Because plowing in that alley, as anyone will know, it's kind of difficult. You're not going to plow out on Main Street because I'd have people. So we're going to, that's one of the things we're still working out, Kristin. We know it's there.
We've lost audio again, guys. Sorry.
This is...
They're static, and then we hear nothing.
Were there storms?
So you get to be, there's only two people left.
My voice typically carries, not that far. My voice typically carries, not that far.
Oh, goodness.
All right. Glasses are on. Let me do this again.
This means we're gonna zip through the rest of the agenda.
Yeah.
Gotta give it some life, right? You got some color in there? Gotta give it some life, maybe.
What, the, I was talking about the next door building. I'll probably, I'll probably like.
Recording in progress.
But, you know, it's nice.
Can you hear us now?
Can you hear us now, Lisa? Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry about that again.
Oh, man.
And my comment is, I, I do appreciate everything you're trying to put in here. Uh, it just looks like an awful lot, so I would also ask you to consider, is there anything that you can simplify?
I think it's pretty straightforward. It, you know, it is a lot of work to be done, but nothing out of my scope of work, so it can be done. You know, did you see what I did to Planet Wings, uh, and Pizza Bira? We ripped down three walls, and it was, you know, a major construction thing, so this'll be fun.
That's one way to put it.
Yeah. I'm right next door, so it can't be that bad. You know what I mean? So.
Yeah, so, um, for my comments, you know, ultimately, we're looking for lighting plan, landscaping. If you're doing any signage, I don't know that you are. Um, and, yeah, I mean, I would look at that parking again, because I'm not sure you're really gonna have enough for your apartments. And let's be honest, you might tell your retailer, commercial, um, renters not to park in the parking lot, but that doesn't mean that they're not going to. So, I don't know. Um, look at it again and, and see if there's anything that can happen there. Uh, any other comments from anyone? Okay.
Go ahead with the motion.
I move that the planning board defer action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments in writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following one through ten.
It's been seconded to defer. Called the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I do have your permission to reach out to Kristen and arrange some meetings, so that we can advance this.
Absolutely.
Because our, our goal is to get back to you in September.
Sounds good.
Good luck.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Bartalucci and Coruto Lot Line Revision. Is there anyone on for that?
No, there's not.
No, there's not?
Nope.
Okay.
It's just a, it's a straight reapproval of the prior application as stated.
Okay. Um, any other information? Andy, do you have any comments on this?
I don't have anything to add on this one.
No? Did anyone else on the board have any comments?
Lisa's been working with her to finalize some things, I think, is what it comes down to, right, Lisa? All right.
Okay. All right.
I move that the planning board determine that the proposal meets the criteria for SEQA type-two action pursuant to SEQA Part 617. Dot five, C sixteen, and no further environmental review is required.
Second.
It's been seconded for a SEQA resolution. Called the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
I move that. I move that the planning board grant conditional line lot revision approval valid for sixty days of the planning board application for lot line adjustments for the lands and of Corralatolo and Bartalucci, which was conditionally approved by the planning board on January twentieth, twenty twenty-two. And I also grant a sixty-day time extension of said approval from September sixteenth, twenty twenty-two forward to November eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, subject to the January twentieth, twenty twenty-two conditions of planning board approval of said application.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to grant conditional lot line approval. Called the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
For, for that, okay. Next up, we have Stafford Farm Townhouses. I move that the planning board grant two ninety-day time extensions for site plan approval and final major subdivision approval from July eleventh, twenty twenty-two forward to January seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Called the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Fomenwash, twenty-six, twenty-nine, South Road. I move the planning board grant a time extension for two ninety-day periods, moving the required construction completion date to February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Called the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Oh, okay, the last one. Yep, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
Guys are moving fast. All right, so, yes, there's a zoning text amendment. Um, last night, town board, uh, adopted a resolution, which you have a copy of, to set a public hearing on this zoning text amendment to, uh, basically address electric vehicle charging stations in our zoning code. Um, they will be having a public hearing on August seventeenth. Um, one of the things that, of course, uh, as an amendment to the zoning, they, they need a recommendation from, uh, the town, uh, planning board uh, before they'll be able to take an action on that zoning amendment. Uh, basically, what, what the, what the local law would do is it creates a new subsection in the zoning code related to electric vehicle charging stations, uh, gives us some, um, definitions, provides some design criteria, um, and allows for them to be reviewed, uh, either administratively or by the planning board, depending on the nature of the, uh, of the, uh, the, the changes that are being made to the site plan. Um, one of the things I do wanna point out at the, at the end is it does require, it would require, um, for certain multifamily and commercial projects that EV stations be incorporated into site plans, um, which, uh, you know, we have been encouraging certainly, but we have not yet had a requirement for them. Um, there is a provision that allows the planning board to make a determination that if, you know, it's not appropriate at this, at this time, that, you know, the site plan could, uh, for example, incorporate just conduit for future installation of EV stations or, or something like that. So it provides a little necessary flexibility. Um, but, uh, it's, I think, a big step forward for us to actually start to require these. Obviously, a lot of developers are already including them in their projects, so.
Okay. One, I have a question.
Yes.
In, uh, subsection S three, in the event that the town determines that the applicant has demonstrated good cause, town may waive the installation of summer roll and so forth, is it town board or town planning board?
Uh, it's the, it's, it's the whoever's, um, it's gonna be the town planning board, because it's a site plan.
Could we insert planning board in that?
Well, Peter, the reason we did that is there may be some, um, changes made to what can be administratively reviewed going forward. And in the case that it may be something where the building department, um, is reviewing it, and it doesn't actually rise to the level of the planning board doing it, we wanted to have the flexibility of having whoever the approving authority is be able to waive it, if it makes sense.
All right, why not say it then? Why not state that, rather than just, I mean, the town, that's painting with a pretty broad brush. Why not just make it, just use better language, is all I'm saying, so there's no confusion going forward.
Well, we can, yeah, we can take a look at that. I don't know. Um, I mean, that would be the way we would typically create, you know, um, it would, it's, we could say the town approving authority, I don't know, something like that. Um, any thoughts on that, Lisa?
Um, no, well, no, I don't have a, a preference. I mean, we typically say the town intentionally to leave it vague.
Right.
That whoever the approving authority is in the town has the ability to do it. I would hate to, you know, limit it in some way. And the other thing is, the planning board should decide, you know, if everyone collectively agrees, and if you wanna make that recommendation as a planning board, or as Peter, I'm not sure, uh, I guess there's still time to have the, any changes made while the local law sits, quote-unquote, sits on the desk of the board members before their public hearing.
Yeah, or even say that with the town approving or approval authority. But, I mean, I think just, uh, just saying the town.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's the way we, it, it's a lot of other sections of the code that are written this way. Uh, so it's kinda consistent with what we, we do.
Doesn't make it better.
Yeah, perhaps. That's, that's, that's certainly true. I, uh, I guess, how do other folks feel?
Honestly, it's, it's fine.
One thing that we've learned, you know, with some of the other, um, charging stations that have been installed, um, is that we're trying to make the electrical equipment look a little better, you know? Um, I just wanna make sure that we get that, that those meter enclosures in the design standards.
That's in the design criteria, yeah.
For instance, the ones at Hudson Heritage.
Are awful.
Yes, exactly.
They're really bad.
I have a couple things.
Yep.
On their electric vehicle.
Can you talk into the microphone just so Lisa can hear?
On their electric vehicle, it says any motor vehicle that's registered within the New York State Department of Motor Vehicles. What about vehicles that are not registered in New York?
That's a good point.
What if somebody comes from Connecticut, or Maryland, Virginia, Pennsylvania? And they're charging.
That's a good point.
That's a good point. Good point, huh?
Another thing.
Obviously, with the State Department of Motor Vehicles, and that way it could be any state.
Another thing, on the maintenance, it says electric vehicle charging stations shall be properly maintained in all respects. By who?
Well, just like any other.
Who maintains them?
Just like any other site, the property owner, yeah.
Yeah.
Does that have to be in the, in the care pack?
I don't think it has to be stated, but if, if you wanna make that recommendation, you could. I, this.
Lisa, does that have to be stated?
It's not a bad idea to state. In most instances, it will actually be probably the company that, um, is, you know, owns the charger. It may not be the property owner who actually owns the charger. Um.
The only thing that this does for us, really, is that it gives us, it just, if, if for some reason there's an improperly maintained EV charging station, right, we could say it's a violation of the site plan and go after whoever it is that's on, that is the responsible party for the site plan. So I, I don't know, I, I mean, I don't know, we could specify, you're right, Lisa, it could be the, the, the company that has the charging station. It could be the property owner that's functionally doing the maintenance, but we would go after, the town will go after whoever this, is the, the.
The town would probably go after the property owner.
Property owner.
Imagine, because that's where your, your charge would go against.
We don't wanna, we don't wanna start pointing fingers, you know, it was not my responsibility to, you know, their responsibility. I, just my.
I, I just had one question, and that was on section five-two, the actual requirements spelled out, where did that information come from that said that would be adequate, or any insight into that?
What, what part?
Which section again?
Uh, in five dash two is where they actually lay out the requirements. So many spaces for.
Oh, yes.
Oh, for the, the.
What, what's the source of putting in those set of requirements? Uh, was it?
We looked at, we looked at, you know, like we often do when we wanna write these codes, we looked at what other communities are doing, um, what we thought was reasonable. Again, these are minimum requirements. Doesn't mean that somebody couldn't put more in, um, but these would be the minimums that would be required.
I, I very much like having that detail. I just didn't know what the source of it was.
Yeah, yeah.
I, it originated in part with, you know, looking at other code sections, and then it was also a discussion among the committee as to what they felt the minimum standard should be. So it's a combination of both.
Is, is there, are there any parking restrictions associated with the, the chargers? Is that, is that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so, and does that count for or against the total parking accounted for on the site?
It would be included.
It would inclu- it would be included as part of the, okay.
It would be in addition to.
Okay.
But there are, you know, there's language about like where on the site it should be placed, and the number, if it's right.
And, and ADA accessible parking spaces?
Yes.
All right, so in, in terms of a recommendation to the town board, certainly the, the, the New, I, Ben, Ben, you're, thank you. The, I, in terms of, the New York State, we should probably change. Um, I think that's a, a definite recommendation. Do we wanna, do you want us to just mention the other, um, uh, items that were discussed? Do you wanna actually formalize them as a, as a, as a recommendation, which is more binding?
Mention also about the maintenance. Maybe we need to get a little bit more specific stating.
And the town.
And also about the, yeah, the number three for the five-two there.
All right.
S three.
Okay. So we'll need a, a motion for a positive recommendation, uh, with one, uh, modification, which would be to eliminate the reference to New York State Department of Motor Vehicles, uh, that it, you know, should be more general to any registered.
Where?
Right. We'll figure out the one. Right, right, thank you. Right. Okay. So can we get that motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
It has been seconded. Called the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. I guess that passes.
Is there anything else on the agenda that we need to talk about this evening?
Nicole, I think you need to show Carl how to run a meeting, so we're banned in two and a half hours.
Dragging rights. All right. Let's terminate it.
Yes, we move that we terminate tonight's meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Called the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you.